I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call attendance.
Okay, Chris?
Here.
Angela here, Greg?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
All right, we're gonna move on to the agenda approval, but I would like to make a couple of changes. If you guys don't mind, I would like Sheriff Matt King to speak before we have public comments. I would like to kind of address what we're really all here for before we have public comments. That way you guys know what we're truly trying to accomplish with this meeting with the public comments, before you guys make your public comments. If nobody has any objections to that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with my changes.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Agenda approved. Okay. We'll start with the sheriff. He was gracious enough to come here tonight and share some of his time to talk about some of the stats and whatnot. So in case he's gotta go right away, or if anything happens, he's gotta leave, we'll let him kind of talk to us a little bit.
Sure. Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me. I was asked by the supervisor to come and talk about what it would look like if Cotterville Township did a contract with the sheriff's office. I support the idea, but I will say right now that is the choice of the members of Cotterville Township, and I respect that either way. I'm not here advocating one way or another. So your questions as far as all that goes is gonna be between you and your board and whatever you guys decide. But I do want to let you know what it would look like if you decided to, okay? So my name's Matt King. I'm the sheriff. If we haven't met, I think I've met a lot of people in this room, but not everybody, but I did want to introduce myself in case we haven't met. I do want to be able to answer some questions, but I don't want to take your meeting over, so I want to be respectful with that. So I see in the information packets up on the table is a copy of the contract we have with East China Township. So that kind of speaks for itself. It's very laid out. And I brought all that information because I wanted to be transparent as to how it would work. But I see it's in writing there, so short of going into it totally, basically for one deputy in 2026. And this is a price that is built up by our county, meaning the county administration, right? So the sheriff's office is an elected official. We are given our budget. And when we add to our budget, the county tells us, hey, you know, this is how much that item would cost. And in 2026, a deputy in East China Township, or any township or city that we contract is the same number, right? And it includes all the benefits and salaries, car, training, overtime, liability insurance, uniforms, the radios, things like licensing for our computer systems. So it's everything. So when you see that the price is $210,000, that is not what our deputies make. It is the total cost, and again, that is not up to me. That is the cost that is built up and presented to anybody that wants to contract with the sheriff's office. And I talked to Mr. Abbey some time ago about this. Matter of fact, during the elections, we talked outside briefly. And I had suggested that if there was a decision to contract with the sheriff's office, I would suggest the team with other townships, because frankly, you know, one deputy is gonna get you one deputy, right? That doesn't mean 24-hour coverage. That means one 12-hour deputy. And you would need at least two if you were gonna be a standalone situation. Now, China, East China, they work together, right? So they have two deputies. They each pay the freight from one, and they overlap patrols and responsibilities. So they always have a deputy on. Deputy calls in sick or has a vacation day, we fill it, right? So you're not beholden to their schedule. You would always have a deputy on. I would suggest getting with those other townships. And there may be another township in the mix, so it would be a possibility of four townships, which would mean you would have two deputies on for a four township area for 12 hours a day. To give you a picture of the hours, China, East China, they do seven hours, I'm sorry, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. during the school year, so we have officers on duty. And quite frankly, with the hours of daylight, that matches up, and you have deputies on duty during school hours. We know that things change in the summer, so we change our deputies' coverage from 10:00 to 10:00. And that is agreed upon with the townships.
Sir, would you mind just moving around a little bit so we can look at you?
Sure.
We're looking at you.
Just turn the microphone.
Yeah, like maybe turn the microphone.
Sure, I'm trying to like address the board.
I got you. I'm okay with looking at your back.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
And if the residents.
Yeah, sometimes I turn it sideways depending on the meeting I'm at, but this one is set up differently, so, okay. Hope that's better. So at any rate, we changed the hours for those townships from 10:00 to 10:00 in the summer. So you have better coverage. Obviously, there's more activities. Kids are out of school. Mischiefs happening, traffic needs change as well. So that's how the hours work out. So I do have some statistics just to fill everybody in, to be transparent as to what the services are going on right now. In 2024, the St. Clair County Sheriff's Office responded to 886 calls for service in Cotterville Township. And that's about what we did for, it's either China or East China. One was larger than the other. I forget off the top of my head. And I'll break it down a little bit so you know what kind of calls. So general calls for service would be assist public, alarms, property checks, civil complaints alike. That's 357 calls. Crimes against persons, right? So the domestic assault and battery, felonious assault, things like criminal sexual conducts. 112 calls for service. Property crimes, which would include theft, M.D.O.P., animal complaints, things like that, 108 calls for service. Traffic calls, everything from a personal injury accident to an accident which is damage to property, B.O.L.s, things like that, 134 calls, traffic stops, 102, and follow-ups, including fire assist, 73. Just to give you an idea of what kind of calls we had here, or what we handled here in Cotterville Township. Now, full transparency, we do that anyway, right? So the question is, why would you want a contract? Why would you want somebody full-time? If you decided to, you would have a deputy assigned, again, teaming up with other townships probably, unless you wanted to. I'm guessing you would just want one, excuse me. You're gonna have a deputy here assigned to you all the time. And you'll be able to have that relationship with the deputy, get to know them. They'll get to know your township more and just be more involved in the community and be a part of more proactive policing. The board would be able to talk to the deputy, probably just about every day. Usually, they're checking with the township hall to see what's going on. And it's a better coverage, better connection if you have a specific problem. You know, that deputy can pay attention to it, instead of hoping that the other freelance deputies are free for those situations. With the sheriff's office, and again, you guys get these services anyway, but with the sheriff's office, in a contracted deputy would be more quickly connected to our detective bureau, our special response team, our drug task force, our SOO program, our community outreach program, Marine and Dive, Traffic Division, K-9, Major Crimes Unit. Obviously, we have our detention center and our record center. So that's the quick of it. I didn't plan on being very long. I just wanted to be transparent as to what it would look like if you guys and gals decided to go with a contract and it was with the sheriff's office. And in respect to the board and Supervisor Abbey, I'll ask, do you want me to take questions now, or just?
I have a couple of questions before we take questions.
Sure.
I don't know if any of the other board members do. Having a contract, will that increase response times? Like, my question relates to, you know, if we make a call here in Cotterville Township, we're not always getting a deputy that's in the next township over. It might be farther from Port Huron. Would that increase our response times by having a contract?
Right, yeah, so, and obviously you mean decreased response time, so better response. Yes, obviously, you'd have designated coverage for your township. So it would definitely cut down on response time for calls.
Another question I have, because I think we've talked about this, is in order, and I'll get to this later too, but would that give us the ability to utilize with a contract the county sheriff's O.R.I. number for our ordinance enforcement, for our code enforcement?
No, that's a separate thing. No, and we are approached about that by townships. Now, we will assist on misdemeanor investigations, on those types of things if we contract with you.
Right.
But the O.R.I. number cannot be utilaterally, like, shared with other municipalities, even though you're contracted with us. That's just not how it works.
Okay. But you guys would then be authorized to write a ticket for misdemeanors here?
Yes, yes.
I don't have any other questions. Anybody else?
That would be my question.
Okay, now I'll turn back around.
There you go.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, so there was, I guess, an incident with one of our board members here. His name was Lance Shurty. He held somebody at gunpoint for two hours. And you guys never show it up?
So I was advised that this question was gonna come. So thankfully, somebody let me know that this question was gonna come. And we looked it up. Dispatch never got a call. He may have held somebody for two hours, but nobody called us. So we have no record of that story, or whatever it is. Not saying it didn't happen, but our dispatch has no record of it. We were never advised of it as far as the sheriff's office, and MSP was never dispatched of it. So I checked on it. I don't know what that story's from. And if somebody has a specific question like that, I think the proper thing to be, so, and I'm not trying to be rude, but if we're gonna get into, hey, this one time my neighbor, you know, built a fence on my side, my address, 1170 Michigan Road, I think the proper time would be sit down or contact me to talk about that so we don't take this meeting over with personal problems. So, and again, I'm not trying to be dismissive, but I want to respect everybody's time. So this, because I've been up here at these meetings, and all of a sudden, it's the air of grievances, and the township board's like, hey, man, you took our meeting over. And then civilians that want to talk are like, this isn't helping what I want to say. So if there are stories like that, or problems like that, I want to address them, for sure, as the sheriff. And I would hope, I encourage you to contact me personally, or contact my office, reference that, okay? So we could talk more about that at another time.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious where the deputy would come from. Is it somebody that's like a CEO that would then become a deputy? Or is it like a new hire, or is it somebody that would be moving from a different city to ours? I'm just curious.
So we would hire somebody, but you would get somebody that we already have, right? We're not gonna send you a rookie. When we have new hires, they get trained for three to four months. And then their first year, they kind of finish out where they're at. Their next year, they have to work midnights with a partner. So they're not really even eligible to get a special assignment, which would be a township assignment, till year two or three, basically. So you would get somebody that we already have hired here, and then they would report down to this area right off the bat. So they're not starting their shift at 7:00 at the sheriff's office and getting down here at 7:45. They're here at 7:00, ready to work.
And that would be for both shifts, because you'd have to have someone.
Yeah, again, I would highly suggest if the township decided to contract, you hire one deputy and team up with the other townships, right? So it'd be, I mean, if you wanted to get aggressive and spend $420,000, and I'm just saying, realistically, it's gonna be one. But that's, any deputy that's got coverage for the townships that you team up with, or any townships that they're responsible for throughout the county, maybe Algonac, or, you know, East China China, or Port Huron Township, they start their shift there at that time.
Okay.
Okay. Did you, I'm sorry, I think you were first.
I have a question, or maybe you can help me understand this, or maybe the board can. We're all residents of St. Clair County. We pay taxes at St. Clair County. They have a county board that has a budget. It seems like we're paying twice for a service if we have to have a standalone contract to have a deputy here. I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, full.
Why is this isn't taken into account? I do not see our county commissioner representative here, Mr. Van Amos, is he here, is he?
So the county board affords me a budget. And my budget, you know, we have general patrol deputies. So any non-contracted township has coverage through that work group, right? So we have self-cars, we have deputies that, I just read off all the stats. Those deputies handle those calls here. So full transparency, those calls were handled without any contract, and we would continue that. But again, I was asked to come here and talk about how, if you decided to want a deputy assigned to your township, so it's here all the time, how it would look. So I'm just being transparent on how it would look if you hired the sheriff's office to be that. I think the next handoff was over here.
Well, that doesn't answer the question as to what would the service hours be? Would they be daytime hours, nighttime hours, and how many hours?
Right.
You'd be provided.
So again, it depends on if you teamed up with townships. And right now, I'm suggesting that if you decided to move forward, we would, your supervisor would have conversations with supervisors. I'm trying not to get that howling. I apologize. With the East China China car, so right now, East China China would, right now, let's say, during the school year, it's 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week. And if you guys team up, there's gonna be another person in the mix. So at that point in time, we're probably gonna have an afternoon car. So now there's two cars in that three township area. And that, it'll be 12, it would be 12 hours for the three townships, and then six more. So you'd have a deputy working 7:00 to 7:00. And then we would look at our stats and decide where we needed double coverage, so they could back each other up and have better coverage in that area. So it would be a six-hour on top of that 12, so two different cars now. That's the bonus of teaming up with another township. You would get more cars for less money, basically, right? So, and then you'd have a six-hour car. It would probably look like something like, like 4:00 to midnight, or whatever the calls for service would, we would do a call study, see when the calls for service are coming in, so we had the best coverage. Does that make sense? So you'd have a 12-hour car and a six-hour car through that three township area.
Right, I'm just asking, what would be St. Clair's commitment to it? Without involving other townships right now?
So if the township wanted to get, go on their own, and if they just wanted one deputy, then you'd get six hours a day. If you wanted two deputies, then you'd always have your 12-hour shift every day. And that would go upon what the township needed. We would do a call study again and decide, hey, or maybe the township citizens tell the board, like, hey, we want them here in the morning during school hours, or even during traffic hours. And we'd be very flexible with that. I saw a hand over here somewhere.
I'd like to ask you about the calls.
Sure.
The numbers you read off, was that just you guys, or does that include like MSPs?
Again, that was just St. Clair County Sheriff's Office. That is, yeah. And I meant to get into that a little more to be clear, so I'm glad you asked that. That doesn't include Michigan State Police.
Definitely, I'm hanging out with AJ's here today.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Bring a deputy on as a township, will that, we have a full-time deputy here. Will you still have the deputies that currently have paying for? Will they still randomly come down and patrol?
Absolutely, as a matter of, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Yeah, you'd still have those deputies patrolling in and out. The number of deputies that would be out in the surrounding townships would lessen. And those deputies would help with backup, would help with traffic problems. Matter of fact, you might get more because you'd have a full-time deputy here with that communication of the needs of the township. And then they'd be able to go, hey, Deputy Joe Blow, I need your help with this problem over here. So you definitely would have those deputies traveling in and out of the township. And in my experience, a little bit more, going door-to-door with a deputy, explaining what's going on. So you're not gonna lose that coverage. Yes?
So you mentioned that different deputies are assigned, like South County, North County. Could you kind of break that down, like currently, like South County? How many deputies do we have usually servicing this area, and what kind of area? Like, what does South County look like?
So South County's pretty much, and I know Grash is on an angle, but kind of Grash itself, right? And there's always at least two deputies on, and then you've got two in Algonac, and then you've got your extra one in Algonac in the afternoon. And that guy, the other half of his shift is freelancing. That's the minimal. Usually, it's four, three or four cars during the day and night. It just, you know, somebody's always off, sick or vacation, so. And that's what the South County looks like. So typically, I guess, on average, you have about three deputies on duty outside the contracted areas, outside of East China China, outside of Algonac, just the roving around. And then, of course, we've got a couple of school resource officers here and there, and our traffic cars. And it's kind of the same for the North, but they might have, they got, you know, Port Huron Township, Port Grash Township, they have really big contracts, and they have several deputies in there. And I think we have probably an extra car or two up north by populace as needed. And you got your floats that, if we're full, we got the float that's going back and forth. And they end up getting stuck south or north because of the call log, so. Any other questions? If not, I'd gladly, yes, sir.
So based on what you see in our township that we've had, would there be a significant benefit to having an officer?
I really do think there is a significant benefit, because you get an officer or a deputy who is involved and integrated in this township. I can contact the Algonac, one of the Algonac guys, or girls, or the East China guy or girl, the Port Huron Township guy, or they're gonna be able to tell me what is going on. They have a connection with the board. They make relationships in the community. And they're able to address problems. If we're having a B and E problem, by all means, if there is a B and E ring down in Cotterville Township, and you guys said, no, we don't want a contract, we're gonna put our full effort into it. I'm not gonna say we're not. But it's those peripheral, like, hey, you know, Joe Blow over at 123 Ninth Street is having a problem with his neighbor, and I've been over there three times and know how to handle it. Or, you know, there's been a larceny problem building up. They're able to get on top of it. You just have that connection to a deputy who is assigned here all the time. And I just think you would get a more complete service. You know, I'm not here to beat the drum, saying that the world's gonna fall apart if you don't get it, but I do believe you'd have.
Are there other townships in the county that are similar to us that can deal with the same kind of questions?
So, full transparency, this is, I've had questions, yes, from other townships, absolutely. All the contracted areas we have are either incorporated or a city like Algonac. So, yes?
Were we having a crime issue? Like, what sparked all of this, this talk about bringing in a special deputy for this area?
As I understand it, years ago, there was a small millage gathered for first responding fire and police. And I may be talking a little out of turn. I'm not trying to.
It kind of goes more in depth of why we're having this meeting. I can answer that a little bit more.
Sure, yeah, because I don't want to cross.
Then I'll just answer the first question. Does Cotterville have a crime problem?
I don't know that they've got a specific, like, it's not like considered a high-crime area. I'm not gonna say it's like higher crime than your neighbor townships. Yes?
Do you interface much with Border Patrol?
Very much so. Yes.
Turn me down this way quite a bit, question.
Yep. We work with, I'm sorry, we work with Border Patrol very closely. We have two of them on our drug task force, direct connection. You know, I've always called the Border Patrol in the federal law enforcement world. I've called them the sheriff's office. They can kind of go everywhere and do what they need to do. And a lot of the other fed groups, they got a lot of stringent rules on them. So we worked with Border Patrol since I was a deputy about 2,000 years ago. And if we need help, they come just like another police agency, you know? Any other police agency calls for help, we go, and they come and help us, and Border Patrol's the same way. But, yeah, we have a working relationship with them. And then we have a member on the BEST team, which is a border team that investigates crime movement, which would include human trafficking, drugs, money. So we have somebody embedded in their team. So we work with them on those border crossing issues, but we're very closely with them, yes. Yes?
Do you know how many Border Patrol agents are assigned south of Grash?
I don't know for sure. I don't want to speak for them, but I remember hearing there's 100 Border Patrol agents in our county. I don't know if that's true, but, yeah. Well, if you go to their building, it looks like there is, but I don't, I don't know for sure, yeah. And they've been getting pulled out of the southern border, and we're getting a little off track, so. But, yeah, I don't know for sure, so. I don't want to hijack the meeting. All right, thank you all. I hope I answered some questions.
Thank you, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Now, I'll answer your question first, why this is a discussion today. In 2019, well, in 2017, a fire millage was put on the ballot, and it was voted down by 40 votes. At that time, we had supplemented, or we had paid the contract with Marine City Fire Authority and Ira Township out of the general fund, and whatever money they could collect from insurance companies from fire calls. When that millage passed, we had a couple hundred thousand dollars in the general fund. The previous supervisor, in order to stave off having zero money, and it was that bad. And in some of these papers, it explains, you know, in 2019, June 5th, we have $182,678 left in the fund balance. That's the general fund, which our township has been taking the fire protection out of since 2010. And in 2010, there was probably close to a million dollars, maybe $700,000, $800,000. If the millage is not adopted, we will have a fund balance of $38,328, after paying the Marine City Fire Authority $96,000, Ira Township Fire Department $9,200, and Drains at Large of $38,454. So the solution was a fire and police millage, or not millage, assessment. Because you can't have an assessment, you can't have just a fire assessment. They call it a public safety assessment. You can't have one without the other. So the previous boards, or the board at that time, adopted a .88 mil rate for fire protection and .12 for a police. And at the one meeting, 13 people spoke. Or, no, I'm sorry, 16 people spoke. I was number 13 to speak out against the millage, or the assessment. And it wasn't against the fire portion of it, it was against the police portion, because it was not enough to get police. And that is an improper assessment. This marks the five-year mark of that special assessment, and it's even been renewed. It was renewed in 2022. At a special assessment, you have to spend that money in five years, or pay it back and end the assessment. In order to end this assessment, it ends the fire protection portion of this assessment too. And that would put us back at paying for the fire authority out of the general fund. And off the top of my head, because I don't have the budget in front of me, last year, we paid $160,000 some odd thousand dollars for the contract. This year's probably gonna be between $170,000 and $185,000, somewhere in there. We currently supplement the fire protection fund, or the fire fund, from the general fund with $10,000 to $20,000 every year, because it's only .88 mils. We truly need one full mil to cover the current cost of the fire contract. Which leads me to the $120,000 we have in the police fund, that we have to either spend, pay back to the community, and end the millage, or use it. We have to do this. This isn't something that we can let go. It's an improper millage. This meeting is to discuss our options. I ran on this. We had to fix this. This was not correct when it was done. It's not correct today. The options that I see are, we increase the police portion to one mil, and the fire portion to one mil. That solves the issue and allows us to get a contract for a deputy in the community. It doesn't even fully fund, one mil doesn't fully fund the contract, but the portion that we have in the fund currently would make up the difference for roughly 10 years. That's one option. Second option is end it all together and pay for the fire out of the general fund again, until we have no money left in the general fund, which would take about five years. That's always an option. Third option is put it on the ballot for just the fire millage at one and a half mils. And the reason I say one and a half mils is because a voted millage rolls back. And when I say roll back, if we started at 1.5, which we wouldn't even have to start at 1.5, but if we started at 1.5, it would reduce every year. And then eventually, we would catch up to where we're in the negative again, and we're supplementing. That's an option. The last time that was put on the ballot, it did not pass. That's why this was done. This is a public, this is our community. We have the option now to get police at a fair price and have some. and have some kind of police coverage in the community. I, I have to leave it to you guys as, as the residents to say where we go with this. We have, show of hands, how many people support the fire authority as it is right now?
Fire?
The fire authority.
Fire.
Are we happy with the fire authority? Are we okay with paying the fire authority?
I just have one question. What township's cities does that cover? Is that Marine City, Ira, Cotterville?
The fire authority?
Yeah.
Uh, Joe, the fire authority, where do we all, where do we cover, basically?
We cover most of Cotterville Township. We go to Starville Road, and then Ira takes over. We cover half of East China, half of Chinatown Township, and all of Marine City.
Beautiful. And, and, and we do pay for runs from Ira Township. So, when they do a run, we do pay for those runs out of what we have in the fire protection millage right now. Or, I keep calling it a millage, it's an assessment. I need to use the proper term, because I'm reading words on these, and the resolutions that call it a millage. Those are our options. We all love the fire. If we put it on the ballot at one and a half, and you guys say that's what we want, I'm all for it. If, if, if we don't, we need to figure out how to fix this problem. Go ahead.
Could we, you know, as we're deciding all this, can we have a breakdown of what we're being charged?
A breakdown from the fire authority or the?
Yeah. What we're being charged for runs outside of our whatever zone that we've agreed to-
Uh, with, with Ira, right now, the residents, we pay a contract with Marine City Fire Authority, and like I say, that goes up every year a little bit. I think, like I said, last year was like 167 or 168. Off the top of your head, I mean, I think we've only had a couple runs that we've paid for for-
I think total in a year, we've had maybe 10 runs through Ira.
Okay, so, do we have a, is there like a way to see what that costs?
It'd be in the-
They'd be in all of the agenda packets.
Yeah, we, we, every, every, every time, I think they bill us quarterly.
They do.
And, and so, they're in the agenda packets every, every quarter when we, when we approve paying the bill.
And I most certainly can make a tally of the whole year too, because I don't think that, I don't think they've given us a full year breakdown. They just send us the quarterly, which-
Might just be helpful for everybody to be able to see that more.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't come to a whole lot, I mean, but it's, but yeah, and I agree. So, so, yeah, I mean, this isn't a, uh, like I said, we're not voting on anything tonight. We needed to come together as a community to figure out how to fix this problem. I didn't create this problem. This board didn't create this problem. We all know how this problem was created. We need to figure out as a community how to fix it. All right, I'm gonna start with you. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm having a very hard time with this. The reason I'm having a hard time with this because, Joe knows. We had a fire in 2019, a house fire.
Right.
We live on the other side of Stark.
Okay.
So, Ira beat New Baltimore, or New Baltimore beat Ira, and beat Marine, and Marine City wouldn't come to our house.
Okay.
I have a huge problem with paying taxes for the fire authority when they don't even come to our house.
Well, part of the, part of the assessment does go, go ahead, Joe.
I would like to comment on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
The reason we didn't go is cuz we did not get called.
And, and I agree with that, but Ira, New Baltimore still beat Ira.
We are not in the-
In that section on the 911?
Job to just jump a call if we're not called, so.
Right, right.
That's why we never respond.
But technically, we're still paying for it because we would've had to pay New Baltimore for that run.
Who billed you?
Chatsfield Township.
In 2019?
Yeah.
I don't know when they stopped, when we stopped billing. It may have been before this assessment was done, and that was how-
Well, I, I didn't pay it.
Okay, that's, and that's why we had to create this, because previous to this, when, when, when the authority, go ahead, Joe.
So, when this millage that we're currently on the 8.8, once they started that, the township should no longer charge the homeowner for it.
Right. Right, well, and, and what I was gonna say is-
Whenever this started.
Right, so prior to this assessment, if the, if the, the fire authority would go on a run, or Ira, the resident would get billed, and just like you, you didn't pay it, so the township still had to pay that bill. And that added up, and, and it adds up, and it adds up. So, that when this was created, we no longer had to bill the residents individually. So, we, we, we have that protection at this point where you don't have to worry about getting billed. The insurance, we don't have to worry about the insurance company's not paying. It's, you're, you're covered right now. And, and, and again, I apologize, what happened in 2019, um, these are part of the issues that I'm hoping to fix. You know, we're, we're what, three, four months in now? Everybody asks, why do we have to do this now? Because this five-year mark takes place in September. What's that?
It has to happen now.
Yeah, I mean, we have to make this decision now.
Not today.
And, 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 and that's the long and short of it. I'll tell you what we'll do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up. Do you guys have anything else to add? If not, I'll open it up for the public comment, and then we'll open it back up for questions. Fair enough? Okay, um, each resident, you know, there's no reason to scream and yell, we're all talking, so there's no decisions being made. We're, uh, first person, Robert Blanchard, if you could come up to the podium, uh, everybody get three minutes. Go ahead and start when he starts talking.
Yeah, I, um, I've lived in this township for eight years now, um, and we literally have only called the police one time in the entire eight years, uh, being here. And the response time, literally, the, the officer was probably at our place within 15 minutes. And it was a non-emergency. So, I mean, uh, what I'm looking at, cuz you have a scroll in there of what, uh, one mil increase on a property would be, I don't see the benefit there. I mean, I, I just, uh, speaking on behalf of myself and multiple of my friends that, you know, we've, we talked about this, this is not a big enough problem, and I know it's something that you ran on as, you know, your, your platform, and I support if you wanna put more cops in this town or whatever, that, I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with you raising our taxes. That's, that's what it really comes down to. That's it.
Dan Salden?
I'm all set. I'm ready to answer my question.
Okay. Sharon Schilling?
I don't give a damn.
Nope, you're good? Jesse Babson?
I was unaware.
What's that?
I was unaware.
Oh, you're unaware?
I was unaware. I had a comment.
Oh, well, yeah, you signed the paper, that's what-
You wanna hear the talk?
You're all right, man. No, we had to sign up sheet, that way I could know, you know, we weren't having people jump out there at once.
You're free.
Well, then, then, then I'll add, Matt, Matt Media, Matthew Media? You're all set? All right. I'll open it back up for questions.
Can I do one, can I?
Yes, you can come up.
Okay, when, when we had the house fire, I just wanted to make, I, I do not support this at all. The fire authority I'm okay with, but not the police. My husband, when we had the fire, he, the sheriff's deputy didn't make it to our house until like 20 minutes. Um, he held a flashlight for my husband to put the fire out in our house. Fire was pretty much out by the time the fire department got there. It is what it is. I'm okay with it. I've only had to call the sheriff's department once, and it was because I work in a government office, and I was being kind of harassed, and so I was in fear of that person coming in our house. And I never saw the deputy drive by, but that doesn't mean he didn't, cuz we went on vacation. Um, but I did ask for a drive-by, and they said that they would be willing to do that, so. I couldn't appreciate that more, so.
Any other questions?
I, I wanna clarify something too. So, if the, if we end the assessment, that ends all of our funding for the fire too. So, that's where the problem comes in, is if we end the assessment, we don't have the funds coming in for fire. So, we're going to lose the, the fire too.
Well, and, and, and so that's, that's where we're here to talk about tonight. I have no problem putting, and, and again, right now, it's about one mil, we'll cover it. But if we put it on the ballot, I would, I would be remiss if I didn't do it a little more than what the cost is now, because that will reduce, that will reduce every year. Yeah, I need to turn that off.
Is it in front of it?
That might be my hearing aid. No, wasn't my hearing aid. I, I, I have no problem putting it on the ballot for a one and a half mil increase, or a one and a half mil millage. If that, if, if, if you can tell me you're gonna support it, because we have to pay to put it on the ballot, we have to cover, I, I don't wanna lose fire. I mean, I would love to have police, um, I would love to be able to say, you know, how can we reduce some of the traffic accidents in our community? But again, I told everybody, it's, it's, it's the residents. You guys have to make that decision. If, if I had to make the decision on my own, I would do it. If you guys are telling us, end the assessment as it is, and you'll vote yes to one and a half, uh, mil, uh, millage for fire, I, I, I have no problem doing that. But the last time we did it, it didn't pass. That's what scares me, because if I end this when we have to end it, I have to count on you guys voting yes in November. And, and, because I'm not gonna do the same thing that was done in the past. I'm not going to put an improper assessment. So, go ahead, Paul.
I have a question. I'm, I'm just trying to sort this out. I know when I was township for 10 years, how we did it, and there's similarities, but I know you guys are a little bit different. Um, our fire was almost identical, but we kept everything under public safety and public works for roads and, um, fire. We were in the sheriff's department, and we could've done special assessments, but as chair, you call him supervisor, I didn't promote that because I wanted everything in the budget in the regular tax levy, which the people voted on. So, we funded our fire and ambulance and stuff through our actual regular budget, even though we could've gone the other route with millages and things like that. But I wanted to keep everything in the budget on the regular levy. And I don't know why, you know, Michigan does it different, I'm not sure.
The, 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 the thing with the special assessment is it is protected funds. If we did a special assessment for fire, like, the way this is right now, fire, police, I can't touch the funds that are in the police fund. Those are restricted. They can only be used for police. If we end this, it's gonna cost us some money, but we have to find out who paid that money, and it's gotta go back. And, and that, that's, that's the long and short of it. That, that, go ahead.
So, I have a question. So, you're, will allow us to vote yes for this. In a nutshell, it's to pay for the sheriff. And if we do that yes, the fire's still gonna run out?
No, 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 no. Okay. If we, if we continue with the assessment that is in place right now, we have to open that assessment back up to raise, to actually double it. It, it would go from one mil to two mil. One mil would be for the fire, one mil would be for a police contract. That would make this current assessment legitimate. It would make it, well, for lack of a better term, it would make it legal. Okay, it would, it would make it legitimate. If we get rid of this assessment as it is and put it on the ballot for a vote strictly for fire, it would be put on the ballot at one and a half mils, which currently, one mil would cover it as an assessment, cuz it would increase with the taxable value increase every year. And that would be small, it might be whatever it is, 1%, 1 and a half percent. So, every year would be a couple bucks more, just like your taxes go up now. On, on the other hand, the millage, we would have to start it at one and a half percent. It's just an estimate. I'd have to really run the numbers to see where I would have to start it at. So, you'd have to approve a one and a half mil rate for fire, which would decrease every year, just like our operating millage started at 1%, we're at .67 now. So, it keeps the funding the same year to year. So, if it starts out at a hundred thousand dollars and your taxable value goes up, the millage rate goes down so that we still only collect a hundred thousand dollars. The contract right now, when we start it, is a hundred thousand dollars, but it crept up to 108,000 dollars. So, now we're collecting less than we're, we're paying. That's the difference between an assessment and a millage. If, 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 if you guys understand what I'm saying, because it, because of the Healy laws, it rolls back. Now, at a certain point, we're allowed to, well, roll back in the opposite direction a certain percentage. So, if it was, if we were down to 1.3, we could roll it back up to 1.35. But that, I mean, you're capped at how much you can roll it back. Again, uh, this isn't the only meeting we're gonna have on this. There's the, you know, I need you guys to think about this. How you guys wanna handle this?
Greg, why isn't that, we budgeted, I was on the fire board as well, in two different townships, and we always budgeted X amount for the fire. It was in our budget under public safety. We didn't touch that money and went directly to the fire department.
We have that.
So, why don't we do a budget where strictly public safety is, fire, ambulance, whatever, and public works is whatever for the road?
And we have that.
And that's in the regular levy versus having a special assessment or a millage in addition to that.
Because, because, because the contract for fire is 180,000 dollars, and we get 127,000 dollars, that's why. This township gets 100, you guys pay us, out of four and a half million dollars in property tax that, that you, the residents, pay, four and a half million plus, we get less than 400,000 dollars. That right, and that, and that includes, uh, 127,000 dollars for the operating millage, 160,000 dollars for the fire assessment, 27,000 dollars for the police, which we don't have, 91,000 dollars for the roads. We run this township of 127,000 dollars and the state revenue sales tax sharing. And that's not guaranteed every year. That changes. We spend over 200,000 dollars on our roads, and we're only collecting 91,000. We make that difference up from the sales tax, from the sales sharing. We make the additional 20,000 dollars that comes out of the general fund that goes to the, the, the police out of the tax revenue sharing funds. With this millage, we've been okay. We're good. We're, we're financially healthy. If we get rid of it and don't replace it, we have to supplement, we have to still pay for the fire out of those funds, and that's 200,000 dollars every year less. That'll come out of the general fund, and eventually, it'll be down to zero again. Go ahead.
Two questions, actually. First, I think you may have mentioned that originally, when they did that, that special assessment, they couldn't do it just for fire. They had to do it for police and fire.
Correct.
How would this be different if we got rid of the police portion and only had fire?
We would have to do that as a millage.
Instead of the special assessment?
Instead of the special assessment.
Assessments and millages are two different things.
They're two different things. In order to have a special assessment for public safety, you have to collect for, for both, fire and police. In 2019, that was my problem with what was being done. And, and, and I was, I spoke out about it. I, I, I didn't like the way it was done because I knew we wouldn't have police. The township has no right to collect your money and keep it in a bank account. That's my money, that's your money, that's their money, that's our money.
And that's what was being done?
And that's what's being done, and we're here to find a way to fix it. It, it makes me sad that our residents think that I'm here to steal or be corrupt or take from you more than what's needed. That's not the case. I'm here to help you guys. I need to find a way so that we're not doing this improper. I'm here to protect you. That's what I'm doing. I, I'm gonna take Sharon first, and then I'll come back, back to you.
Yeah, I do have a question now, because I'm trying to, you know, decipher all this through. I didn't hear how long the contract with St. Clair deputies would be. How long would that contract be written for?
Matt, are those generally three-year contracts?
They're generally three-year contracts, yeah.
Okay, and that's fine, but after three years, we all know that people are getting raises and costs are going up.
Well, the, the, the contract will go up every year. It goes, I mean, if you look at the sheet, it, it starts at 200 and, the, the, what East China's paying right now, it starts at, let me get it here. It, like, 2024, they paid 199,000. 2025, they're paying 204,000. 2026, they're paying 210,000. If we did this as an assessment, that 1%, it's not quite enough to cover that cost, cuz we'd only collect on a one mil. It's not quite enough to cover that cost, because we'd only collect on a one mil, we'd collect a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars roughly, or a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. But we currently have a hundred and twenty thousand in the fund. So we could supplement with what's in there currently, for about ten years with the increases. A-again. Everybody knows I'm for police, but I'm not going to do this if this is not what the community wants. I can put both of them on the ballot, it costs us money. There's no, as of right now. There's, there's, there's no indication that there's gonna be anything else on the ballot in November. That can change.
So how long would that last for? If the contract with police is three years, how long would that millage?
We could, eh, eh, well, the assess, the special assessment?
The special assessment.
The way it's set up right now is the current one expires in twenty twenty-seven, so it's a four-year assessment. But because it's improper, and we're at the five-year mark. I need to do something now. Um. We can't continue with it the way it is.
So how long would you run it for, another five years?
I mean, we could, well, we could, we could, if you guys wanted it as an assessment, and we were okay with that. I would, I would. Open this assessment back up and amendment, and amend it, and do it for three years, one mil for fire, one mil for police. That would cover the three-year contract with, with the sheriff's department, and we could. Have another meeting in three years to discuss if, if it benefited the community, and if we were happy with the service we got. Then we can say, yeah, go ahead, extend it. Um. I'm trying to do what's right, that's all. Um. I saw a hand up way in the back first, let me.
So, we pay the village and we get Marine City Fire Department? Why aren't we able to use that money that we have in the police fund or use their police department?
I, I'm sorry. Clarif- clarify it a little bit, say it one more time.
Our taxes, we get Marine City Fire Department, takes calls to Catraville Township.
Right.
How much money for police right now? And have to spend?
At this time, we have.
It's not Marine City Fire Department.
It's Marine City Fire Authority.
It's a fire authority that Marine City is part of, as well as us and China and.
Use that money that we have for police to get, to say, hey, we'll give Marine City their police department money?
We asked, they didn't want a contract with us.
Oh, you mean, you mean, can we use that police money that we have now, give it to the Marine City Police?
Here you go.
Yeah.
It's yours and then make runs when we need it, or no?
No.
They were interested in that.
Um. Mike, Mike, Mike is here.
Yeah, no, I get that, but just that, that way everyone, and it stays the same, and just say, okay, here's the money.
Eh, I wish we could do that, I'd do it in a heartbeat. Yeah, Mi- Mike Reese is here, he's the Marine City manager, him and I have spoken, I, I'll let him kinda.
So, I'll tell you right now, the Marine City Police Department does not have the capacity at this point in that department to handle the additional workload required. I'm quite familiar with the sheriff's program, uh, uh, understand it well, he does have the capacity, he adds to the capacity. This time in Marine City, we can't do that, maybe in the future, but right now, uh, it's a difficult field to bring people into. And to keep them, and we're having a tough time just making sure that with our corporate limits, um, that. Regarding the Marine City Fire Authority, uh, those numbers are determined based upon calls for service. So based on how many calls for services, how your community is billed, Marine City pays at least fifty percent. The entire budget of that, because we have fifty percent of the calls for service. And, and, and I would tell you, uh, I would be very, it would be remiss on your part to go backwards. To something you had previously and run down the general, that's like playing Russian, that's a, that's, that's a real problem. Um, when you take out of the general fund and you decrease it to like, you know, thirty-some thousand dollars or something like that.
Yeah.
That makes it really difficult to continue to provide services for the township residents. And then something catastrophic happens, you have no funds available to take care of.
Excuse me, I didn't catch your name.
Michael Reeves, uh, city manager for Marine City.
Um, well. I'll go, I'll go, or go ahead, you, or go ahead.
I, I just, I, it's kind of a statement, but, you know, we elected you, our board, to represent us, and to dive into these issues pretty deep. And to understand, I mean, it's kind of a complex situation in far as dollars and cents and, you know, whatever things were, so. I guess my question to you, the board, is, each one of you, do you support this? I mean, you've dealt, you, you've built into it a lot more than we have.
I definitely support it.
You guys support this, especially, uh, Sarah, because she's a treasurer, I mean, it's a dollar and cents, like, it sounds like it's no greater than that.
So. For me. I'm, I do support this. And the reason being is that if we don't do this, and we try to pass just a millage for fire. Only, and don't do the police part of it, that's putting a lot of faith into people who don't know what's going on, showing up to the va- ballots. And voting yes, which is, I don't see that happening. I think a lot of people go to the ballots who don't really pay attention to what's going on, and they just look at it and say, oh, well, the taxes are gonna go up, I'm voting no on this, I don't want my taxes to go up. When they don't know the facts. And if anyone here wants to come to me after the meeting, I have, I can tell you exact dollar amounts. Of what each and every one of your guys' taxes will be going up. It's probably not as much as what you think it's going to be, I was surprised on my own property, I think it was a hundred and thirty-six dollars a year. I spend more than that on Starbucks in a month, probably, so for me. I, I do support this. I think that it would be a good move at this point.
And that's just not for police, it's fire and police for a hundred and some bucks more.
Well, that would be the, currently, like, well, she currently pays that amount for fire and police, so it would double, it would be an additional hundred and forty bucks.
Yeah, uh, my taxes yearly, my property taxes yearly will go up, I think it was a hundred and thirty-six dollars a year.
Mine'll go up a hundred and forty, so, I, I, I mean, I, I don't hide it, you know?
And like I said, I would love to go, if you wanna come up afterwards, I can tell you exactly dollar amounts, what everything, whatever we.
Lisa, are you for this?
Um, so, I, I personally don't like any new taxes, um, I, we pay a lot in taxes, um, and it always goes up, as we all know. Um, eh, you know, in my opinion, it's, uh. We're sort of in a rock and a hard place, um, eh, you know, there's things that have been done, um, previously that maybe we, um. Might have done differently, but we can't really rewrite that. Um. Do I? I, I think that as a community, my vote, honestly, would be what your vote is, do you know, like?
That's a cap out, this isn't a.
I just, I, 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 I feel like, I feel like. You know, we, we, so we've been here, our family has been here over twenty years, um, my, eh, eh, my entire family's been here for decades, um. And Catraville, the reason we moved here was for the taxes, we were in New Baltimore previously. Um, and we paid for all those city services, and we didn't feel like we needed those, um. Me personally, um. I like that everyone's here, I like that everyone has, um, come out tonight, because. Um, you know, my husband and I have been coming to meetings for years and no one comes, so, I, it, it's not really a cap out, I. Eh, you know, if ninety percent of you are fine with paying that extra, then I am too, um, eh, you know, we're not. That extra a hundred and fifty dollars is not gonna break my family, so I, but I do honestly believe over. In our last election, over forty percent of our voters were sixty and older, which means that they're retired and they're on a fixed income. So, you know, eh, do my parents wanna pay more in taxes, they don't, um, they live here in Catraville as well, um, but again, um. Would it be, uh, beneficial in some ways, yes, because, uh, you know, you'd never wanna be in an emergency situation, but. Um, unfortunately, my family has, and the quicker response time is always better, so.
Angela?
I do support it, and it, exactly what Lisa just said right there, I have two young children that are home, um. I mean, they're not young, young, they're not young, young, um, fifteen and, uh, fifteen and eleven. They are, they do spend time home alone. And to have a quicker response time if something happened, it would break my heart if there wasn't someone there. And something happened to my children. So, for young families, yeah, I. You know, I, I, I believe that they feel the same way I do, and I, and I get it for the, the older generation, they, you know, they don't necessarily have. You know. Young people at home or whatever, but if they, you know. I don't know, it's, it's hard, but I do support it. You know, eh, thinking for myself, and.
She supported it even when she thought it was three hundred. She, and it's only two hundred for her, so.
I, yeah, and I, I will admit it, I am one of, eh, I am. It, it will cost me about two hundred extra dollars a year, um, you know, my, my increase is, uh, more than the. Yeah. And. Two hundred dollars.
Everything else.
Yeah, it.
Can't fight it.
Yeah. But.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, I heard, I heard you say yes.
I, I definitely support this, it's not just about, the contract's not just about response time, there's many benefits that it'll take. Like he's, like, uh, Mr. King said. Eh, the relationship with the community, more presence, I mean, I don't know if you guys noticed the grave sites and the ditches throughout the community. We have a speeding problem on the backroads. I have kids, I have animals, sometimes the dogs go into the street, and I have trucks and cars and side by sides going down my street at ninety miles an hour. You know, do I, do I think this is good? No. And I don't want my kids to think that that's something they can do as well, because, oh, you know, people do it all the time. We have a, a, that's, that's a big problem that I see, there's been fatalities, I mean, how many fatalities have we had?
I can't give you the exact number, I mean, I, I know of like four or five crosses, I know we had a fatality in August.
Just right down the street from my house, unfortunately, and my child saw it, because we were coming down the road. And that poor man was lying in the road, and my youngest and I were in the car, and we saw it, and it was, you know.
We hit a family of four, Diet Starville and Broadbridge, eh, eh, it's, eh, eh, listen. If it saved one life, to me, it would be worth it. Nobody's asked me, I, I've, everybody knows I support it, um. But I won't. If there's major, if, if, if everybody is against it, I'm not gonna force it down your throats, I told you.
Taxes, right? Everybody hates taxes, right?
I hate paying taxes.
But costs go up, it's not something we can control.
Listen, if I could give you police for free, I'd do it, if I could pay for it out of the general fund, I'd do it, in a heartbeat.
Well, let's also talk about the misdemeanor ordinance infractions that we can't get on.
Well. Well, you see, they can, they can enforce some of them, because they have a contract with us, because right now, they won't enforce any of them, and. You know, this, half of this book, I don't wanna say half, three quarters of this book, this is our ordinances. Okay, ordinance of Catraville. I think everybody knows I pass, I, we're, we're, we're gonna adopt a new MCI ordinance, which is municipal civil infraction ordinance. That takes care of about this much of this vet book. Okay? The rest of this might as well go in the garbage, because it's, it's useless. Um, I'm working on trying to find a way to fix that problem. Um. There's a lot of benefits, the only downfall is we have to pay for it. So, I'm gonna take her, oh, wait, we gotta, we gotta go back to you, because you didn't get to speak yet, so I'm, I'm over here.
I have two comments. How does having a millage or not having a millage, does it have an impact through, for our homeowner's insurances? For crime and fire? Is there something that they could go in and say, oh, you're a high risk because you don't have this?
Yeah.
What effect that?
The, the, well, they track public safety, the insurance companies track public safety. Uh, eh, for instance, if you have a fire truck in your neighborhood, they'll know about it, we're, 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 we're trying to build a building in the park here, which will house one of the tanker trucks. It'll, eh, the ambulance, the tri, tri hospital ambulance has asked for a space to lease in it, so now I get to make the building a little bigger. But that will help with our insurance, because we have those services. It will help lower or keep the homeowner's insurance down, just by having that, by having a public safety contract. It should help reduce or curb the cost increases. Um, by having that protection in the community, I'm not going to guarantee you that's what happened, because again, somebody did mention we live in Michigan, and insurance companies like to hit us hard. But if, when you call and get homeowner's insurance, some of the questions they ask you is, where's the closest fire hydrant? If you have a fire hydrant within a hundred and fifty feet or two hundred feet of your house, you get a lower insurance rate. Do you have fire, do you have fire, uh, service? Yes, you, the, they give you a discount for that, do you have police? Yes, you get a discount for that on your homeowner's insurance. It is a fact. Um. How much does that offset? I'm not gonna throw numbers out, because I don't know, I'm not an insurance agent. But it does benefit, that's one of the benefits, so that's a good, good statement.
Comment I have is if we go ahead with some kind of a police protection. I would strongly recommend you stay with the sheriff, that's an elected official, that's somebody you can have. We would have direct influence and who's in charge of those people, it's constitutionally written into Michigan. Versus a city police department where you wouldn't have it, be able to have a voting right.
Okay.
I just wanted to address something Chris said, um, about the speeding, the side by sides and all that. One deputy is not going to stop any of it. They have to be sitting on every single road, I live on Arnold Road at Starville.
It won't stop it, but it might help deter some of it.
It's not.
It, well.
It, it might deter on one road.
Eh, I, I.
I could, I, I.
I'm not gonna, I, I'm not gonna disagree or agree, I don't know. Hey, if, if, if it did, great, that's just one.
I'm gonna speak, I'm gonna speak for myself, right? The, the, um, sheriff's department, the sheriff's department sits at Starville and Twenty-Six Mile, right, in that, uh, fence company? I know they sit there, so I slow down, right before, right before it, and sit down, and there it goes.
Matt, Matt.
Matt, look at here.
The car's off, you want a license plate number now?
I just say, they're sitting there, bro, and I slid out at Starville and stayed up at home. I mean, y'all know, and I, and, yeah, I just gave myself a look.
You know, I, I, another.
If the speeders know, with the side by sides, the dirt bikes, if they know they're gonna sit somewhere, yeah, they're gonna be like, okay, I'm just gonna slow down for that half mile, and then go past them and speed up.
Eh, but I think the point is too, that they, they're not, so, the deputies, that might be where. The Saint Clair County ones sit regularly, but if we have one on patrol in Catraville, they're gonna be driving around constantly. You're not gonna be able to target and say, oh, they're right here on Starville, or they're right here, you know, they're.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll ask Bob first, Bob, can I call you Bob?
Yeah, you can call him Bob, but you better take care of Melissa first.
All right.
So I guess. The, the fire authority, going back to that. Whether we have a contract with them or not, will they still service Catraville Township?
Nah, I, I, I mean, we still have to pay for it.
We still have to pay for it, but it would get billed to the homeowner, correct?
No.
No, you can't do that, you can't do that.
Can't do that anymore.
So her instance. There was a law passed.
I thought it was only because we had a contract with them.
There was, there was a law passed that doesn't allow us to bill homeowners anymore.
Yeah.
There's a Michigan law.
It's a Michigan law.
I'll go to Bob, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay, so, back to, eh, from everything I've gathered so far, you have, um, two options, you have a millage. Or you have, um, this, um, special assessment, right?
Right, we can fix.
Those are two, like, our two options, the special assessment that's currently in is set to sunset at five years or something like that, right?
No, by law, the money that we've collected for the police has to be used or paid back, and once we decide to pay it back. We have to end that entire ass- assessment, so we can't just end the police assessment, it ends the fire assessment. I can't, eh, eh, and then, in order to do it again, I have to recreate the same thing, and I don't want to collect people's money. And just put it in an account, that's not, eh, 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 it's not. To me, it's, it's robbery, and I'm not gonna rob the residents anymore.
And I understand that, but the, to where my question was, um. If. You don't do the, um, the, um, millage, then can you? Can you take and revise the special assessment that's already there for a different, different, um, rate, is, is that what?
I can, I can open the current assessment up that was done September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. I can open this back up, hold a public hearing, and we can change the numbers that are the point eight eight, point oh eight. To one mil, and I can change the point one one nine two to one mil, and we can use the funds that we currently have in the fund to start a contract. That can be done. Um.
Can you make it point nine-nine and point zero-one?
Again, and I'm still taking money that it's. But it's improper.
But it, all it's doing is sitting in a bank account.
I can, I cannot, it, it, I can, I can't, I can only use it for a contract, it's restricted.
Can you donate to the sheriff?
Nope. It is restricted. I, it's restricted, I can only, I can only use it for a contract with the, with the police department.
Not, their shut's being built with ARPA funds.
Yeah.
Well, you could use it for ambulance services.
Nope, it can only be used for a police contract.
Took it, if you took the police out and replaced it with ambulance.
No, because we have a current ambulance millage that we already pay for. Not through the township, through the county, it's a half a mil countywide. And that's to cover the tri hospital ambulance, which handles our community. And, and we have an ambulance in East China, an ambulance in Clay, and an ambulance in Ira. And what happens is, is one, one of those three ambulances go on a call. A, an ambulance comes to our community, because we're in the center, and they usually park at the church or the gas station. And tri co, tri hospital ambulance approached me because they found out we're building a building, so now we gotta build it bigger. Because they would like a space in that building, so that they're not sitting at the church. Or the gas station, their, their drivers aren't sitting there for four hours stuck in that ambulance, they can pull in the building, the heated building. Have a picnic table there, get out for a couple hours while they're waiting for the calls, or if there's a call, they have a place to go. And I, and, and, and they're gonna, they, they've offered to pay some rent, we haven't discussed that amount, but basically, you know, it's enough to help keep the heat and lights on in the building. Which is a benefit. Um, so, I can't use the police, I can't even change it to that, because we already pay it. So I'd be, that'd be a double millage for the same thing. You see what I'm saying?
Wait, you keep skipping over this.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm cool, um, I, this is just a blanket statement in general. People do not know what their taxes are paying. If you look at your tax bill, it's broken down, the county gets most of that, it's county drinks, county roads, county this, county that. We literally pay point six, seven mils for, for operating our township, that is nothing. It's like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year based on tax bill values, it is nothing. So, I just am encouraging everybody to look at your tax bill, see what you're paying for, county operating gets over five mils. That is little, like, eight times what we pay for county bill to operate. And then we see people, you know, complaining, we don't have this, we don't have that, we don't do this, there's a reason for that. Things cost money, so I'm just encouraging everybody, I'm not saying I'm either way on this, it may seem like I'm one way on it. I came one way, I may leave another, um, but I'm encouraging everybody to look at their tax bill, because you're not paying. Nothing to Contra Ville itself. And if something doesn't go through to cover these costs, there's no way normal operating costs are gonna cover those costs, so it's either gonna be gone. Or something has to replace it, so just keep that in mind. It's not just gonna keep happening as status quo, there's no money for that.
I, I'll add.
Just keep that in mind.
I'll add to kinda what her comment just was. Uh, right now, we pay, with the special assessments. We pay twenty-four point one or twenty-three point seven mils, we are the lowest taxes in the county. Our township has the lowest taxes in the county. If, if we compared Clay Township with their special assessments, they're at thirty-two mils. Algonac is at thirty-four mils. Marine City, I think you guys are at thirty-six total, some thirty-six, thirty, somewhere in there. Um. China Township is at twenty, just about twenty-six, East China, I think is at twenty-six point three. We, we are the lowest in the county, and we would still be the lowest in the county. And that's not an excuse, that's, that's just putting out facts, and, and what she's telling you is, if you look at this pie chart on the back of this presentation. The blue goes everywhere else, the orange comes to us, it's eight point nine-three percent of your taxes comes to us, we don't get that much. And we've done a darn fine job on this year's budget to, to improve on what we're doing. And, and I was really disappointed, because a bunch of people asked me to hold budget workshops, and, and nobody showed up. And I could have explained some of that then, so, go ahead.
I, I've heard you say multiple times that, like, people aren't showing up and you can't get people. So, if that's the case, what are you guys doing to get the people? Like, what else can you do?
Did you show up tonight?
I was very surprised.
It wasn't, it wasn't through your efforts, it was through.
I, I.
Something else, but I'm just saying, like, how can we get more people?
Well.
Involved, like, what do we do?
I, i- if it wasn't through my efforts, then I would say pay attention to what I post, because I post every, if a mouse farts in the back corner, I post it.
So, let me ask you. I'm not talking about Facebook or anything, I'm like, what do we do as our township?
Make you guys angry, so you come?
I, I said, I came because I met you at the gas station.
Okay.
You took a minute and introduced yourself.
Right, right.
I didn't know you from Adam and Eve.
Right.
So, uh, you had a conversation, and, uh, here we are.
I, I, I talk to everybody.
So you do, you, eh, eh.
He talks all day long.
Well, I, I know, but when you say effort, are you talking about Facebook, like, are you post, I, I'm not, because I'm not on that. In my elderly neighborhood.
It's, I make sh-
Like, how are we?
Do you have internet? Do you go on the web at all? Um.
I mean, we try to post things, it's on the sign at the road. It's on the door of the building, it's on, it's on Facebook, it's, we just re-updated our, or just updated our, our website.
Okay.
Um, the back of your water bills, if you get water, the back of your tax bills, there comes attached or included in, is a newsletter. That Nicole puts together every, uh, every time she sends out the tax bills.
And do those have all these meetings?
We try to include as much as we can, I mean, there's only so mu, so much paper space we have, there's, yeah.
I put it out three weeks ago, because I, I discussed what we had to fix, when we approved the budget at the March meeting, I, I. I'd said, we need to talk about this, we need a special meeting on public safety, we need to figure out how we can fix the problem we're in. And, so. There's only so many resources for me to put it out there. And, and with, you know, I, if you don't have a smartphone, if you don't have internet and you don't look at the website. Uh, some things go in the newspaper, but how many people read the newspaper? It costs us a lot of money to put something in the newspaper.
Well, I mean, now you're saying, like, well, we shouldn't, because it costs us money and, and people don't read it, but, I'm saying. You know, like, there's a lot of people that aren't on Facebook, is anything going out via mail? Or on, or during, maybe, maybe, like, during meetings or.
Well, that's why when we send them out on the back of your tax bills and your water bills, because we're already sending something out in the mail, we're already paying for the postage.
Right.
But I have a que, like, do you have any suggestions of how?
Well, I, I don't know, like.
Cause we're open to them.
This, that you wanna get people, maybe on the day of, there's, like, maybe put something out in front of the building beside the sign, because people. Will pass that.
Meeting today, like a flag.
I, I, I mean. Okay, here's, here's, let me, let me put this out to you, I just had a, I just had a Zoom meeting with a company called Go. Text My Gov, Text My Gov. And it would cost us forty-five hundred dollars a year, if everybody had a cell phone and received text messages. If we were gonna have a special meeting, if we had a water alert, if we had something going on in the township, I can type a message on the computer. Hit send, and everybody in the township gets a text message. That's an option, I just had the meeting about it.
Are the meetings the same time, the same day every month?
Now, our, our regular board meetings are the second Wednesday at seven-thirty of every month.
And so we live here, you know that, if you care, show up.
Yeah, it's always the second Wednesday, it never changes, seven o'clock, second Wednesday of the month.
Tell your neighbor.
I mean, may, maybe somebody else can show up and hassle me other than Dan. Uh, but I, on a serious note, I mean, we're gonna have another meeting about this. I want everybody to go home tonight, in the next couple of weeks, and think about what we talked to, about tonight. Talk about it with your neighbors, talk about it with your friends that live in the community. I, I, I wanna fix the problems we have, that's what I ran on. This assessment is a problem, it's the bane of our existence right now, we need to fix it. Go ahead.
So, back to why we're here tonight, so, you wanna up our taxes to pay for the police. But that still doesn't solve your.
No, it doesn't.
Issue with the, the fire.
It does.
It does, yeah.
Cause it's one mil for the fire, which, which takes it from point eight-eight mils for the fire, to one full mil for the fire. Then I don't have to take twenty thousand dollars every year out of this fund, to, out of the general fund to put in the fire, I put that twenty thousand dollars towards the roads or something else again. And then it gives us one full mil for a police contract. And we already have a hundred and twenty thousand, one full mil is about one ninety-six, according to this, if we did it this year, police contract would be two oh-four. I could supplement the, the fifteen thousand dollars out of the hundred and twenty we already have collected. Uh, and, and cover that for five to ten years. So it do, it does solve the problem.
Does that last as long as this contract?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, would, right now, right now, the current one ends in twenty twenty-seven. So, but I have to either end it now, because we're at the five-year mark. Or.
As a previous.
Because of the previous, the, the way the law is, we got that money in the account, it's your money, I have to spend it for police. Or I have to sell it, give it back to you guys, I don't have a problem giving it back to you guys, it's gonna cost us a little bit of money to figure out where. John Jacob Jungerheimer Schmitz moved, because when he sold his house.
Right, because he did say that there's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in that account. But that does not mean that that hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars even goes back to you guys, if you've moved here. In that timeframe, part of that money that is associated with your property would go to the previous owners. And we'd have to track them down, and then the other part goes to you. Or all of it, you know, if you just moved here, you guys wouldn't see any of it. And the rest, it would, we would have to track down that person, and I'll tell you, the people I bought my house from lived there only six months. So I, the, part of it would, a little piece of it, tiny little chunk of it would go to them, and then I'd have to track down the people even before them, so.
Go ahead.
You, you're saying, you're saying it would cost money.
Well, because we have. Yep, because we have to either pay.
Right.
Eh, eh, it's, it's kinda like skip tracing, because not everybody leaves a forwarding address, so. And some of the people may have passed, so then how do we, we have to try and get it to their estates? There's, there's so much logistics, and I, and I, and I'm gonna tell you right now, if we have to do it, we do it. But, it, it's, we can't pay for what it's gonna cost to pay it back out of the money, because all that money has to go back. So we have to take that out of our budget or our general fund to pay it back, and again. These are the, these are the issues that I brought you here tonight for, is to, 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 to come up with a solution.
I say yes, I support you a hundred percent, your communication is awesome, um, so I know what's going on now. And think about it, folks, it's peace of mind, it's like we pay for insurance. Is it because we're gonna make a claim? No, because our insurance rate will go up, but it's peace of mind in case something happens. You don't wanna be the person in that emergency and you're waiting, or your house is on fire and nobody's coming.
And again, I'm so sorry, you're making me feel bad. I will say this, I, I, I'm gonna stand up right now and I'm gonna applaud you guys. Thank you for coming, thank you for being polite, thank you for listening. And thank you for helping me try to fix the problems of this community. I don't know if you guys understand how many hours a day I work. I, I am doing something, I was talking with people till four AM last night on this subject, I work non-stop. And I see the problems of some of the people in our community, not everybody sees it. I, 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 I can't tell you some of the things I see that I, I can't even fix, that breaks my heart. I get phone calls every day. All I'm asking is for the community to come together and help me, I'm not gonna do this with an iron fist. And, and, and that's the god-dying honest truth. Um, does, eh, eh, anybody else have anything to say?
I just to circle back, I'm so sorry, I took ten one of the budget workshops, I had conflicts the other night, so I, you know. I, I'm trying to do my best under some budgeting, but to simplify this, I don't think we'd even be here in the first place if. When we have a regular town budget, the fire department needs two hundred thousand, whatever the number is, it doesn't matter. You budget exactly two hundred thousand, we never had anyone not supporting our fire department. They knew exactly what the fire budget was, it was a joint fire department, similar to an authority. Um, we always had that in our budget, we didn't take money from other parts of the budget, offset it, it was right up front. This is how much the fire protection costs, and the people knew it.
One hundred and.
We would need to.
One hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars is my budget.
That's all we have.
But that's where we have to, that's what a budget is, it's, it's basically a bullseye, where you're looking at, okay, fire protection costs this much. We have to have this much for fire protection.
But where would we get it from?
Yeah, where are the funds coming from?
In our general levy in the general budget under fire.
And that's a hundred and twenty-seven.
So then we have to raise our taxes.
We would raise it for that reason.
We'll have to pay anyways.
Will you guys vote for me to do a two pers, two mil rate for operating, and then you don't have to pay any other ses, I, I, I would love it.
People would know exactly, and we wouldn't be doing special assessments or millages, because we never had a problem with the fires. Ever, they knew exactly what.
Pretty much every millage that has gone to vote in this community has been voted no.
But I think if the public understands the fire is the key issue, that's just one example.
Seems you're pitching it as the sheriff to pay for the fire.
What's that?
It seems you're pitching it as paying for the sheriff to pay for your fire.
Absolutely not.
It's an option.
Option that we don't have any police at all, we take away the assessment.
Police, no, they, they control our, our area.
Well, we, we, we're paying, you're paying for it, that's the point.
For the police right now, so what we could do is end the special assessment.
Throw in the garbage.
And, and be done with that, and then come.
Would you, would you pass a one and a half mil millage for fire?
Mills, so we have to put it to vote to the voters.
Well, why does it have to be one and a half mils when we have lots of that amount now?
Because if, if, if it's, if it's, uh, if, if one mil is a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars this year. It's actually kinda like one ninety-one, minus another seven, because there's exemptions for VA. And the, the current contract is one eighty-nine or whatever, what it's gonna be this year, that exactly covers that. With a millage, if I had a one mil millage, this year, it would give me the one ninety-six, it would cover the contract for this year. Next year, I'd get the same amount, so let me, let me do it like this, let's say one mil is a hundred thousand dollars. And my contract is a hundred thousand dollars, if I.
Explain what the heavily law is.
I, I'm, I'm going to.
Well, no, I'm saying, but how, like, if we, if we continued on with the path that we're on right now. Say, say you didn't wanna fix the problem, how would you have less? How would that money not cover the fire?
Oh, it would still cover the fire, but I'd be committing a crime, it's illegal, the township is in violation of the law. I need to fix that. I, I, I can't.
You know, I understand that, but I, what I don't understand is how does point eight mil cover the fire current?
It doesn't.
We're supplementing from the general.
I'm, I'm taking, I'm taking twenty thousand dollars now.
One at a time, please, we can't.
I, I, I'm taking twenty thousand dollars out of the general fund right now. To subsidize that other shortfall from the point eight-eight. If I had one full mil, which would be like one ninety-six, that would cover the current fire. Uh, uh, contract, one full mil would cover the car, and I wouldn't have to supplement that twenty thousand dollars that I could be putting towards roads. Or, or something else. If we do it as a millage, the reason I would, we would have to approve it at, say, one and a half mils to start. Now, I wouldn't have to charge that the first year, I could charge one point two or one point one, and we can, because of the heavily amendment. I'm only allowed to roll it back so much, to get, to raise it back to one point two or one point three. If I start at one point five, the next year is one point four-one. Then the next year after that, it's, or, the next year after that, it's one point three-two. So, if it starts out at a hundred thousand dollars, I'm still only collecting a hundred thousand dollars, and the contract goes up. It's, it's called the he, it's a, it's a heavily amendment, and it's, and, and it, it keeps you at the same funding level. Our current operating millage started at one, one mil, we're at point, this year we're at point six, seven, zero, zero. Um, so, if, if, did, 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 did I explain it right?
Yeah, it just, it sounds off when we currently are running with point eight. And now you're asking for one point five, well, why would you do just that millage for the point eight, we're, we're currently paying?
Because we're.
Get rid of the fire.
Because we're we're subsidizing that with other funds from the general fund. So, yeah, I I mean, like I say. It's a mess. And that's why I had you guys here to understand what kinda mess it is and how I have to fix it. Um, yeah.
Just one other thing. I mean, you want more people to be involved with this and see this. Uh if the website can maybe put links for these like documents.
They're on, it's on there. Everything is on the website. Everything you click on agenda and minutes and then it takes you to docs on demand. You can go to agenda minutes. You can go to the resolutions. You can go to the. The parts and rec minutes.
This this meeting will be on there too.
This this meeting?
There will be a link to this, to the recording of this meeting. You could share it with all of your neighbors, your friends. This is being recorded and there will be a link right on our website.
I I I I try to, when 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 I had the planning commission hold a special meeting about the MCI ordinance, I I I videotape that and posted that too. And and uh. I- i- it's it's not a solution, but it's 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 a Band-Aid fix. I mean, it should have been done years ago, but. A- a- again, I I I give you guys the information as best as I can. I mean, you can call me, you can email me. Everybody knows I'll answer your questions. I I I am open. My I'm open all the time. People 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 call me up to midnight and. One o'clock in the morning. I haven't slept since yesterday because I was up all night answering questions. And that's the way I am. I'm here for the people. And and it's. When you get, when people start posting on Facebook and messages get unclear. Um and and conversations get misconstrued. It's like the game of telephone. Everybody remember the game of telephone when we were kids? You know, in kindergarten, we had the Indian circle. I'm sorry, the Native American circle. Yeah, whispered in the other area by the time a dog was a was a was a. Pepsi or whatever. Things get misconstrued. I try to put the word out there as accurate as I can. I'm honest and upfront about everything. Every minute detail that I do, I tell all of you about.
Just uh simplifying, as I hear all these different contracts and and villages and this, so it's like we're locking ourselves. Into these different pockets. Whereas why can't we decide in our assessment, this is what we're going to need. There's no penalty for what we. Have put in there because we analyze what our area does. Cause but when you get into all these other different, they say this, we could only do that. This is this, we can only do that. We complicate ourselves. Instead of just doing what we need and settling it as far as the people of. Whatever setting one year can be different than another year. And you determine and just an ordinary assessment like you would do your own budget at home. In the end, you put the money where it needs to go and you don't limit yourselves by this rule says we can only do that. That rule says, well, if we don't do that, we're gonna penalize there. Let us decide.
Because the because this the legislature of the state of Michigan has about seven thousand books this thick telling us we can't.
Well, that's not going to all of that. I wish.
I I got rules I gotta follow and it protects you guys. Um, yeah. You know. Hey, I wish it was. I mean, I mean, cause in all reality, the board has the authority to just say, we're gonna open this back up. We're gonna increase it one mil without the vote of the people. I would all I would have to do is hold an open hearing and say, and then take a vote. It doesn't matter what the people say. I have. We have the authority to 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 do this without anything. I don't wanna do it that way. I either want the support or I wanna know that if they don't, if we don't want police as a community. That you guys support the fire and 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 will continue to support the fire. I do not. I support the fire a hundred percent. Do I want police? Yes, I'm I'm in favor of it, but I will not shove it down your throats. So again, we're probably gonna hold three meetings between now and July about this. Um, I hope every one of them has as many people here and has as has as much conversation. Um, I hope some of you see that I'm not trying to shove something down your throat. I try to explain the cost of what it is and let everybody know why we need it. And it and it's hard on Facebook. I pro- I probably have done fifteen thousand messages on Facebook replying to comments and. And it's tough and I gotta stop because it keeps me up all night. And I but but don't get me wrong. I love communicating with you guys. I I love it. And and you guys give as good as as you get and 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 I can't keep up sometimes giving it back. Cause you guys have hurt my feelings some lately. Go ahead.
Okay, Greg. Um when would you anticipate the next meeting being? You haven't scheduled anything, but.
I haven't scheduled anything yet. I would say the end of April, we'll have another one.
Okay.
Um, and then I'll try and find another way to make sure everybody knows how it is, but. I mean, a lot of you guys showed up tonight. You knew about Facebook. I it's a good tool. And I and and I hate, I I don't want, I I don't wanna have to defend. The what I'm putting out there is as as the information because I'm not gonna hide anything from you guys. I you don't even have to turn in a FOIA request. Come into my office and I'll turn my computer on and turn it around and show you what it is. I I I I am that honest and open about everything. And I promised you I would do that. And I will continue to do that. Day in and day out. So I and I I hope you guys realize that. I I mean, I'm not trying to hide anything from you. That's why we're having this meeting. So if anybody ever has any questions, do not hesitate to call me. I mean.
I could personally say I called you twice and answered my phone call on your personal phone. So you need I the past administration.
I sent you a message on Facebook about does Culver Island?
Yep, I I I respond to everybody. And if you call my phone in the office and I don't answer, dude, I'm calling it back. Yeah, you called me, you know, and the residents will tell you. I talk to everybody. And I and 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 I I treat everybody as family. I mean, we're we're neighbors. We need to get that. We need to get back to that in this community that we are neighbors. So.
I had one 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 other question.
Yeah.
We pay taxes for the ambulance?
Yeah, it's a half a mil.
So why don't I go? Let me take him to the hospital.
Yeah, that that you should turn that into your insurance, but you're 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 paying for that service because what happened was is during COVID. We almost lost the ambulance service for our community, for our entire county, because there was no funding coming in. So they went to the county and asked if the county could impose a half a mil uh a millage. And this is this is recent. This is within the last. Three years, yeah, that this has happened. So now we all are covered for ambulance service and and. They're there. I I I'll tell you.
No, I get that. You hear, explain it to me like a five, but you said insurance. I get a bill. We pay for them to come get us, but I. I still end up with a bill.
We supplement to keep them open.
If you didn't pay that, I would pay more money to the ambulance?
Probably, yeah. And 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 I can't say that because I'm not the ambulance company and 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 I'm just learning more, I you know, Ken is the CEO of. Try tri hospital.
You don't gotta spend a lot of time.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, I I I mean, again. Does I I mean, does anybody wanna shout at me or yell at me now? Cause I was expecting it. I was prepared to cry. Um, well, with that, does anybody else have any other comments? I lost my agenda here.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Um hang on, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting.
I make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can I have a second?
I second.
All in favor by saying aye, aye, all opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned.